Do any commissioners have any other items to add to the agenda for our briefing meeting? All right, then we'll follow this agenda. Are there any questions about any items on the agenda for our meeting this evening? All right, terrific. So the first item is the procurement policy.
Good afternoon. I'm Ron Venturella, procurement manager for Buncombe County, and with me today is Matt Evans, the financial planning and analysis manager. And today we're going to discuss the new procurement policy. First, we'll talk about the procurement manual, the current procurement manual, and the various policy it includes and the reasons for a new policy. Next, we'll discuss the creation and review process the new policy went through, and then we'll open it up for discussion and questions. Back in November of 2018, the board adopted the current procurement manual, and it consisted of the seven following policies. These policies included detailed procedures, templates, and forms. Around the same time, we started using our current HR and financial software, and since then have adopted a new contract management software. And so these procedures and documents have become outdated. The travel policy will remain its own separate policy, and which will come to the commissioners for review at a later date. The other six policies will be incorporated into the new procurement policy, and they are as follows. First is the contracts policy. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidance for creating, managing, and retaining county contracts. The contracts policy details who in the organization is allowed to originate and execute contracts, as well as provides a pre-audit requirement for any contract resulting in financial obligation. This policy informs employees on what language contracts should include and how contracts should be initiated and routed. Next is the gift card policy. It's to instruct employees for requesting and issuing gift cards and when the use of a gift card is appropriate. This policy has helped us to minimize risk associated with gift cards for limited programs allowed by the county, including certain grant-funded programs and client assistance. Next is the meals and meeting expense policy. The intent of this policy is to ensure that food purchases are done through a thoughtful process. It urges county employees to consider appropriateness, cost effectiveness, and special accommodations when planning for a meal purchase, while requiring records and compliance with audits. This policy addresses certain emergency and extenuating circumstances that may exist for unplanned food purchases and provides guidance on what to do in those instances. Then there's the current procurement policy, and it discusses an array of topics all relating to how we purchase and interact with suppliers. The existing policy is rich in relevant statute language, policy, and procedures. Out of all of the policies we're discussing today, the procurement policy is the one to benefit the most from a separation of policy and procedures. Then there's the procurement card policy, or the P-card policy. By utilizing a P-card program, the county has a vehicle for more efficient and cost-effective purchasing. This policy details the roles and responsibilities related to P-cards and includes a requirement for regular training on how and when a P-card may be used. And then lastly is our surplus of personal property policy. This policy establishes procedures for processing and disposing of county surplus property. It also discusses the roles and responsibilities related to the disposal of property and when it's appropriate for county employees to purchase said property.
Thank you all for having us. So I wanted to provide a very high-level snapshot of our county policy review process, which this was the standard for which the proposed policy that you have before you today went through. So we have a steering committee that works to identify any existing policies that need to be reviewed or revised, and any policies that need to be created. That's in conjunction with the policy management team. Next, the policy management team works with departments, we call them policy owners, most of the time they're departments, to draft and research. Then there's a review process, a feedback stage, where we hit county management, department heads for any feedback. Then this cycle kind of goes back and forth through a feedback stage. We discuss with the equity and inclusion folks, and then ultimately we end up in a stage where it's at whatever level of adoption it needs to be at, whether it be internal or commissioners. So the proposed policy that we're presenting today, it represents an internal collaborative work combining each of the related manual policies that you heard Ron talk about, except for the travel policy. That's going to come to you soon, but I think it's important to note that all the procedural elements have been migrated out of the, what we call the procurement manual before, into a standalone document. The new policy also incorporates edited language that enhances equity in our procurement process aligning with county goals and values. And then, of course, ultimately edits were made, which I'll discuss on a future slide. As previously noted, the policy we're presenting to you today combines policy elements from six existing policies with edits. The matrix on this slide shows where we consolidated the existing policies in the new proposed policy. Travel policy, I believe it's slated to go to the steering committee next week, so that will come, that's why that's absent from this slide, and that's why we keep saying it's not coming with this packet that you have today. But I think by migrating the procedural elements of the policies, it's really streamlined for the actual users of the policy. It helps them get there quicker to what they need to find. So the existing policy recognized a desire of finance to work with minority-owned businesses when possible. We've edited the language in this new proposed policy to directly solicit vendors who are certified by the State Office of Historically Underutilized Businesses, we call those hubs, or who have self-identified through various processes that we have internally in finance. The language that we use mirrors an existing policy that we have called the prequalification of bidders for construction or repair projects. And then I also just wanted to highlight some more contextual elements to equity in general, specifically in finance. So Ron has worked, we've all worked with Kate, to develop a communication plan for outreach and education. We have a new online-based vendor portal in which we're going to be able to actually do what we're trying, what we say we're going to do in this policy, where we can directly solicit vendors based on commodity code. And engagement's a big piece. We have internal goals to try to drive engagement. And in the procurement process, Ron's already started that. I saw a slide going through on the TV about the reparations summit that was Ron's first The packet for today, you should have a handout that shows changes between the current policies and the new proposed policies, with sort of like a line-by-line change. We've summarized the changes on this slide, noting themes and specific changes in certain cases, but language has been added to address a wider range of authority, like the inclusion of federal language, and a wider range of stakeholders, meaning we're not just saying departments or employees anymore. We're actually expanding that out to anyone that's doing business on behalf of the county. We added a requirement for procurement procedures and references throughout the document. For example, when a purchase order is required, or all those tables that you would see when you're bidding out goods or services against whatever type of federal, state funding you may have. We also added some language for food purchases, like demonstrations, and we added a, we noticed a section was missing for means of procurement specifically for fuel cards, thinking about the ways that we actually procure things. Edits to the existing language that we consolidated are pretty straightforward. The purpose there was clarification, making things more concise, and then connecting to other existing county policies. And we removed some language, just a few things. One about requiring a non-appropriation clause for all contracts. We changed, we moved that to procedures document and made it, went applicable, and opted to include, we opted to take out redundant, we had a lot of redundant statutory references in there that we decided didn't need to be in the policy itself. And then, of course, we moved all the procedural language to a healthy document. So thinking through next steps, we're here today on the 17th. We're hoping to come back on the regular agenda on the 7th, where we're going to have to take some action. So you adopted before the procurement manual was a resolution. We're going to ask you to rescind that resolution, and then there's probably, and froze in here with us, there's probably going to be another resolution that we have to adopt to keep at least one thing in the policy that we have regarding disposal of surplus property alive, essentially. So now I turn it over to you for any questions or feedback, thoughts.
Can you elaborate on, you said removing the non-appropriation clause requirement for all contracts. Will you just elaborate on that decision, please?
Absolutely. Yeah, sure, cool. So not all contracts, there's not an exchange of funds in all contracts. Some of them are just a memorandum of understanding. And so, you know, in our policy, we had, we needed to have a non-appropriation clause, but in those type of contracts, it isn't necessary, so.
There's one type of contract we found out where it is necessary, and that deals with installment financing, which I didn't think was, we didn't need to promote that to the policy itself. So we did include the language in the procedures document as a nice-to-have when we're thinking about doing business, but we didn't think it was necessary to make it safe for all contracts.
So you know when they say it takes a village? The policies I'm getting forward, or getting ready to discuss with you, it truly did take a village. There were many folks that were involved in the creation, review, process to get us to where we are today. So we're going to start off, and I'm bringing seven policies today. So we're going to talk about the personnel ordinance, alternative workforce, which is a new policy, conflict of interest, which is a revision, and then five standalones, and that's going to be code of conduct, discipline, separation, nondiscrimination, and harassment, as well as grievance. Starting off with our alternate workforce policy. This policy is creating a just-in-time workforce for the organization. This is outside our regular full-time and part-time positions. It describes the types of workforce positions that we want to make sure that we recognize, and that includes academic internships, apprenticeships, PRN, short-term and long-term temporary positions. This policy does not include our contract workers. In this policy, it also specifically outlines the criteria in regards to max length of time that they can be a temporary employee, what benefits we offer, and if there's any retirement attached to them. Next is our conflict of interest. And this process followed very similar to what the diagram that Matt just showed you in regards to the approval process. This is a standalone process. It's being removed from the ordinance, and all the policies I'm about to mention right now will be removed from the ordinance. And then what this policy will be doing is, let's see, I think I dropped over there. It ensures that Buncombe County employees are appointed, and appointed board members and commissioners, nonprofits that receive money from the county to perform their duties as public employees operate an affair in an unbiased way, ensuring that decisions are made are not impacted by or appear to have any personal self-interest, private affiliations, or the likelihood of gain or loss for them or others that may be, that may wish to benefit or disadvantage. So really what we're looking at is that we're adding the reference to the conflict of interest for our standard operating procedures. We removed references to Workday. We changed the approval for secondary employment from human resources back to the supervisor. Code of Conduct. Again, this is another standalone policy being removed from the ordinance. It will establish a clear standard and expectations for employees and conduct alignment with our core values, which are respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity. The key features for this would be, it's going to set a baseline expectation for our employees' behavior. It incorporates the county's values into our policy. It sets baseline expectations for what employees can expect from their supervisors and our leadership. It creates a baseline dress code for employees. Our discipline policy. Again, it's a standalone policy being removed from the ordinance. It establishes the reasons, types, and determining factors for disciplinary actions within the county's disciplinary model. It provides guidance while assuring employee conduct and performance issues are addressed in a transparent, consistent, solution-focused, and effective manner. We also revise the disciplinary appeals procedure. Key concepts for this would be that we have four types of disciplinary actions, which are written warning, disciplinary demotion, suspension with pay, and disciplinary dismissal. And then there'll be three just cause reasons for dismissal or disciplinary action, and that's unsatisfactory job performance, grossly inefficient job performance, and unacceptable personal conduct. The separation policy, again, standalone policy being removed from the ordinance. It establishes a clear and consistent term and conditions for employee separations. It created separation, or separate separation appeal procedures for reduction in force, unavailable for duty, and conflict with employee terms and conditions. It updates reduction in force sections. Key concepts for this are that within the personal ordinance, we have resignation, retirement, reduction in force, disciplinary dismissal, and unavailable ability for work when leave is exhausted. Additional reasons in this new policy include probationary separation, which is now clearly defined, unavailable for duty, conflict with employee terms and conditions, and end of Nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy, again, standalone policy being removed from the ordinance. It defines the county as an organization that actively opposes discrimination, harassment in all forms, and to clearly define prohibited behaviors, protected classes, and reporting expectations. This applies to all county departments and employees subject to the county manager's And then the key concepts is that Buncombe County is committed to ensuring all employees work in an environment that is free of discrimination and harassment, and that employees are treated with dignity and respect. It actively promotes equal employment opportunities, diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility to foster a climate of innovation and collaboration that capitalizes on diversity, lived experiences, and contributions of every member of our county workforce. Our grievance policy, again, standalone policy, it's being removed from the personnel ordinance. It establishes an efficient and structured means for employees to address concerns or conflicts in a transparent, productive, and solutions-focused manner. It applies to all county employees, subject to the authority of the county manager, and the intention is to make the policy procedures more employee-friendly. Key concepts is the employee should feel free to respectfully express differences of opinion and constructively address and resolve them. We want to acknowledge that disagreements are normal and healthy for an organization and explicitly discourage the perception that grievances are inherently negative in undesirable situations, complaints, or problems. Next steps. So today, we're bringing to you the briefing, and then on November 7th, we hope to come back to have a public hearing and then a vote. And then, coming in late winter, fingers crossed, will be the end. We'll bring all the rest of the policies to wrap up our personnel ordinance project. Thank you so much for your time.
Before you go, commissioners, there's one change that we made that may be controversial, so I want to make sure that we actually spend some time and highlight that one, and that is the RIF, changes to the RIF in the personnel policies. Currently, in their policies, the RIF has a standard severance packet for anybody that is let go or lay off. And what I'm proposing in that, instead of having a set formula, that the commissioners will make that decision based on every single RIF that there is. Right now, I believe it is that you get one week of pay for every year that you work with up to 12 weeks of pay if you're let go. And what I'm proposing is that that's a decision that the board would make every time there's a RIF, if there's a RIF decision. But we can put back a formula, but I wanted to make sure I put it out there, because that is the one controversial change that the employees would see.
So you're talking about the reduction in force?
Sorry, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, a reduction in force, I'm saying RIF, R-I-F, reduction in force policy. If there is a reduction in force or a layoff of county government, right now the personnel ordinance says that you would give one week of pay for every year they work, up to a max of 12 weeks. What the new policy would say is the board of commissioner will make the decision on what a severance package would be offered to employees.
And can you speak more as to your recommendation for this change, please?
In my mind, it depends on what is going on at that time. If it is an economic downturn and we need to release folks from the organization to have a 12-week of pay for several employees, might not be something that can be afforded at that time, so. And whatever the board of commissioner makeup is, they will prefer to make that decision than decide based on, this is what's already baked into the ordinance. We can put it back, it was just giving the board flexibility at the time to decide how to do that.
This could be either for, like, fairly large groups of people, let's say there was a severe economic recession or something, we had to make changes to our overhead costs. Or it could be for an individual. I would, I would, my...
Can you clarify, what do you mean for an individual?
Like, it could be an individual, it could be an individual person. It could be let go, right? This could apply to individuals or groups of people, or am I wrong?
It could, it could apply to individuals or groups of people, yes. Typically, individual is let go based on performance or those gross things that you saw. It wouldn't be a layoff of one individual position, but that possibly could happen, correct?
What's the most likely scenarios where you see the RIF being applied?
Larger groups. A reduction in force for large groups.
Due to, due to economic situations or need to restructure county government for some reason.
Correct.
Those are the more likely scenarios.
Yes.
So in practice, that would just be us having this on our agenda, going through a list of 20 names and just saying we approve.
It would be a package that you decide on, so you wouldn't go through the list of 20 names. If we are 20 people, you would decide that we would give them extra vacation, extra payments, or, yeah, but you would decide on a package deal.
Gotcha. We can, we don't have to make this decision today, but I appreciate you flagging it. My initial feeling would be to have more of a standard policy than trying to make it up on a case-by-case basis.
That's what's...
I mean, I understand the situation you're describing if there wasn't a difficult economic environment, but in a way, that's, would be kind of the worst place to also treat employees who are in a tough position less favorably to. So in a way, it just seems like having something that's predictable and standard, I would lean in that direction, but I'm just sort of, I'm happy to, happy to hear everyone, you know, the arguments on all sides.
I am definitely the outlier on this one. I would say that staff wants to put it back and be predictable as well. I'm definitely the outlier on this one.
Yeah, I agree with you, Brownie, because I've worked in a situation where we left it up to the board of directors, and we ended up in a large lawsuit because of that, because it wasn't standard. We were challenged, and it ended up being ugly, we settled. But I think if it's standard, it's smoother, and you're treating everybody the same, whatever. And, you know, on the other hand, that covers us regardless of the recession or whatever. It's always the same. Because, you know, if it's a downturn, I mean, I just believe we need to be standard with that. I disagree with you on that one, I think it's smoother and it's fair out for everybody.
I'm going to be the outlier on this, too. Having gone through a reduction in force and a furlough at two different organizations, each timing is different, and each budget is different. And so being able to say what is currently in the policy of one week per every year may not be financially solvent for, at that time, the organization to be able to do. It would have put the organization in a worse financial position to have had to follow something at that moment that was in writing. So I lean towards more flexibility in order not to put Buncombe County as a whole in an even worse financial situation. And these are hypothetical as well. I hear and I completely understand where staff are coming from, from that predictability component, but just from that hypothetical, not knowing, it's really, really difficult to say we, we're going to follow exactly what's in writing this particular time.
I went through this with mergers. We worked for five years, I worked in mergers, and I agree, working with us, you know, it's two different things when you think of a small organization and when you think of a larger organization. In Buncombe County, with a $600 million budget, we're not a small organization. And that's where I think it's important to be more standard, because the bigger you are, when you try to streamline that for every instance that comes along, sometimes it seems like that you're showing preference to a class that you didn't the one before. Maybe I'm getting too far in the weeds legally, I'll leave it to the lawyers, but I wouldn't feel comfortable with that.
So the last thing I'll say on this is, when I went through it, it was with an international, giant international organization, multi-times the size of Buncombe County, and it was still really tough. So I'll go with what the majority believes, but compared to going through it with an international organization, our budget is, as it compares.
I don't think it's inappropriate for us to consider that we have a standard course of action that we normally go with, but also have the discretion, depending on what the economic climate is in this hypothetical, to reserve the option to do that. If we choose something standard, then great, we can stick with that, but depriving ourselves of the option to consider what we're dealing with in a rather unpredictable scenario is kind of hard.
Any other, I mean, we're kind of into it now, so. So any other thoughts on this?
I know, right?
Compromise is good, I'm hearing a compromise.
Could you restate the policy?
Yeah, as it is today.
What it is today, just restate that, please.
Today, it says one week of pay for every year that you've worked for the county to a max of 12 weeks.
Oh, so.
For three months.
Three months would be the max, and, but it could be as little as one week for people who have just been working here last, I mean. I'm still on the predictability side of it, but Terry, Jasmine, Parker.
I'm more tolerant.
Okay, yeah, we can all, whatever.
I like the compromise.
You are such a bunch of softies. If we were put in this spot, I can tell you exactly how this plays out, so why don't we just, you know, be real about it? You would cave, and you would do that, that thing, so it's just not waste your time.
Told us how he felt about us. Commissioner Moore.
I'm telling you, you're all way too nice. You're way too nice. This is a, this is a compliment. You're way too kind to, anyway, that's why I think we should just make the policy good, and then you save yourself the anguish.
Commissioner Moore, can you restate? Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking him to restate his compromise.
Sure, so I think we can adopt an informal policy or framework that we're looking at and say, this is what we ideally like to do in most scenarios, but still leave ourselves that out to allow board discretion, depending on where we are, not knowing what the economic climate or what is the cause of this reduction in force. Just give us that out when the time comes, if needed. But that's to say nothing of us having a standard framework that you're proposing. But that's to say nothing of us having a standard framework that you're proposing. We want to be fair.
Well, it wouldn't be an informal policy, but my, my recommendation then would have a minimum, and you can go up from there. So, maybe it's not as much as 12 weeks, but at least have a floor, and then we can work from that floor.
That's what I was going to say, I'd love to see a 30-day minimum in a scenario like this, just to annoy things further in this conversation, would be to give, yeah, to give 30 days minimum, you know?
I think that's right. I feel like, I feel like maybe we reduce the maximum, but we also bump up the minimum. I mean, one week is, I mean, even if someone only worked here a year, I mean, it's still them losing, you know, their livelihood. I mean, so I think it should be, like, more generous for the newer employees, but perhaps capping, you know, at least under the standard policy, you know, narrowing the gap between the two. Something like that.
We might want to...
I can live with that one.
Have an objective criteria, so that way, to avoid lawsuits, like, here's what we will do.
Yeah. We'll come back with something on that one.
Yes. I can absolutely live with a benchmark there versus three months of pay without any conversation. Give us the flexibility is what I was looking for.
Well, maybe this was helpful, then. Y'all, think, think through what you're hearing, and we'll talk further. All right, well, great, great. Appreciate all the conversation, appreciate you elevating that, Avril. So, any, anything else we ought to, I don't think there are any other questions that the commissioners had at this time?
I was looking behind at Matt. Anything else on the procurement side?
All right. Thank you, Sharon. Thanks, Avril. All right, well, that's everything on our agenda, so we will adjourn and reconvene at 5 o'clock.